This is John Mark.
Hi, John Mark. Kevin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
And Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy. Elaine, Councilmember Genaway?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we are now returning from closed session.
Are we on Facebook Live yet?
It's about to start. We're now returning from closed session. City Attorney, is there any reportable action from the closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is no reportable action with respect to the one item of closed session. That concludes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to move forward to our regular meeting. Good evening. I would like to call a regular council meeting back to order at 7:16. At this time, if you're able, please rise for the pledge allegiance. Please place your hand upon your heart. Veterans may salute. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, our next item is public communications. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each public comment. City Clerk Gomez, do you have any public comments to read into the record? Thank you. At that time, then, I'm going to close public communications and move to the consent calendar. We're now moving the consent calendar, items one through 10. I would like to note that we will be voting on the current version of item number four as highlighted and provided by the city clerk via email. Are there any items that need to be pulled for the comments or discussion from the council?
Mayor Davies?
Yes, Councilmember Genaway.
Go ahead, Elaine. Councilmember Genaway?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes, I need to abstain from an item on the warrant register of April 7th on pages five through 11, vendor 1220, payment 6321 to Dale Marketing. That is my husband's employer.
Thank you. Councilmember Reins?
Madam Mayor, this is John Jennings. I need to pull item number six, and I also have to abstain from item number eight. I abstained when this first came before us. It's within 500 feet of my residence, and so therefore I won't be voting on item number eight.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Reins?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Minigar?
None. I make a motion to pass the remaining items.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead, and we've got a motion to pass everything but item six. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Councilmember Reins?
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, can I take a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Councilmember Jennings, that's aye.
Councilmember Genaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Reins?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Minigar?
Aye.
And Mayor Davies?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to move then to item six. Councilmember Jennings?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I move into that, if I could, I'm having a difficult time hearing you and Mayor Potem Minigar. There's a microphone you can move closer. That would help.
Is that better?
Bring up.
Was this?
It is. Thank you very much. I wanted to just sort of call out item number six. It is a very needed thing. This redebate program has been discussed and been around for a while. It does provide substantial savings to our residents who are able to take advantage of it, but it also does create a penalty at a time when we are attempting to do the right thing by our residents, and some people might not have the ability to either pay for the redebate at this time or to participate in the reduced cost savings that might come from the other program. My suggestion would be, and I talked with the city manager today about this, is while I do intend to vote in favor of this, I would like to be mindful of the fact that we not take immediate action without more understanding about what position these people are in in the event that they have to be having a coronavirus-related financial hardship. So that's the only comment that I had with that on moving item.
Mayor, may I?
Please. City Manager?
We have every intention of being compassionate and understanding during this time. We also are very well aware, as all of you are, that the fire season is practically year-round now, so we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to avoid a potential difficult situation later on. So the community development staff is going to be reaching out, and we also have voluntary program where we can do the work as a pass-through, and it's less expensive if somebody hires their own folks to do that. So that's the first conversation that they will have with these folks. So we'll do everything we can to help them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on item six? Otherwise, we have a motion by Councilmember Jennings. I'll go ahead and second it, and then we'll go ahead and vote, and I'll have the city clerk call it out. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Genaway?
Present, I mean, aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Minigar?
Aye.
And Mayor Davies?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous vote. All right, that passes. We're now going to move on to the discussion item. Our next item is discussion item number one, and that is the adoption of resolution number 2020-1316 supporting the Governor of the State of California's executive order N-3720 pertaining to a temporary statewide moratorium on rental evictions. Deputy City Manager Martin, please provide a staff report, and then we'll, if we have any public comments, we'll go to that, then we'll go to council comments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For your consideration this evening is the adoption of a resolution related to the support of a temporary statewide moratorium on rental evictions due to the COVID-19 health crisis. With the temporary closure of nonessential businesses to slow the spread of the coronavirus, many Californians have been faced with financial difficulty, including the ability to pay mortgages and rent payments in a timely manner due to various financial losses and/or unforeseen loss of employment. While financial hardship caused by this health crisis will likely continue into the foreseeable future, state and local government agencies have met the moment head-on by assisting those in need, which includes many Laguna Niguel residents. To do so, on Friday, March 27th, Governor Newsom introduced Executive Order N-3720. This executive order created a temporary statewide moratorium on residential rental evictions through May 31st, 2020, due to the health crisis. The executive order grants 60 additional days for a tenant to file an answer in an eviction lawsuit, which extends the time in which a tenant can be evicted from his or her residence. The practical effect of this change is that tenants will have an extra 60 days to stay in their residences before any eviction process can be completed. As such, during the designated term of the order, Laguna Niguel residents who are unable to pay rent will not be subject to enforcement of evictions by law enforcement agencies or the court system. Details of the executive order require a tenant to declare in writing no more than seven days after the due date of their rental payment that they cannot pay all or part of their rent due to reasons specifically related to the COVID-19 public health crisis. A tenant is also required to retain documentation and is obligated to pay the rent in full in a timely manner. It's important to mention that the executive order does not prohibit tenants who are able to pay all or some of their rent from doing so. It also does not relieve a tenant of liability for unpaid rent after the moratorium is lifted. This executive order was made effective, again, immediately, March 27th, 2020, to provide immediate relief to tenants with rent payment that were due on April 1st. Again, this moratorium is in effect through May 31st of 2020. Resolution number 2020-1316 formalizes support from the City of Laguna Niguel for this important eviction moratorium and supports City Council Goal One of Public Safety and Goal Two of Fiscal Sustainability of the strategic plan. Given this, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number 2020-1316, supporting the Governor's executive order, which places a temporary moratorium on statewide rental evictions. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager, Deputy City Manager Martin. Let's go to any public communication on this item first.
Thank you, Mayor. The only public comment I have is from Kristy Cornwall. She's the Director of Community Health Investment for Mission Hospital. Director of Community Health Investment for Mission Hospital. Dear Laguna Nigal City Council, good evening. My name is Kristy Cornwall, and I am the Regional Community Health Investment Lead for Mission Hospital. I am writing to urge the Laguna Nigal City Council to issue a citywide moratorium on evictions to protect the most vulnerable residents in our community. At Providence St. Joseph Health, we believe health is a human right. Everyone deserves the chance to live the healthiest life possible, especially those who are poor and vulnerable. But it's not easy to take care of your health when you don't have a safe place to call home. We are concerned that Governor Newsom's recent executive order N dash 37 dash 20 on evictions is causing confusion among renters and landlords alike, and does not preclude landlords from filing eviction lawsuits. Although billed as a moratorium, the executive order merely gives residential tenants affected by COVID-19 who are in the process of being evicted extra time to respond after being served with a summons. Therefore, the order only applies to tenants already served with court documents, and does not address the underlying issue of protecting renters from being evicted during this volatile time. We are also concerned that the governor's order does not require landlords to postpone collection of rent to a later date for renters economically impacted by COVID-19. Without providing tenants sufficient time to stabilize, many renters will not have the means to pay back rent, resulting in a looming wave of evictions just as our recovery efforts begin. Many cities in Orange County have enacted moratoriums covering residential tenants unable to pay because of COVID-19 financial hardships, and we encourage you to do the same. Mission Hospital is committed to finding ways to ensure this crisis does not further exasperate our housing challenges. Thank you for your consideration and support.
That concludes the comment. Okay, so that closes public communication on this item, correct? Yes. Okay, great, thanks. Let's move to council comments. Um, we'll start with, uh, Council Jenaway.
Thank you, Mayor Davies, and, uh, thank you, uh, Deputy City Manager Martin for the report. You know, we are all greatly concerned for our residents, some who turn down the road, are facing challenges right now, both financially and health-wise. And, uh, staff has been very diligent about keeping us up to date on what is going on with the county, with the state, and with the federal government. And some days, this may be a moving target, but, um, our, our city is keeping up to date with all of the, uh, new regulations. So, I think this, uh, this resolution is, it supports the city's strategic plan, it supports what we as a council want to do for our residents, and protect the safety of our residents, and keep them in their homes. So, I move that we adopt this resolution, and also encourage the governor's office to continue this order for the duration of the emergency. We are not sure how long this will go on, so I would encourage his office to continue it for the duration. Thank you, Mayor Davies.
Thank you. Councilmember Reins?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Davies. Yes, I, uh, echo, uh, my colleague's statement about this is unprecedented times, and we are very concerned about those that are extremely vulnerable in our community. We at Laguna Nigal have always been proud of the way that we care for our residents and provide services for our residents. I want to refer everyone or anyone who is in this s- situation, or has any kind of concern about the situation that may not understand the resolution, or what their rights might be, that they can access information from our website, and we do have city staff available to answer your questions if you need to be directed to the right agency. We also have a lot of nonprofits who are, um, available to help with, uh, food and even, uh, other situations that might arise, so that, that information is all available to help prevent you from becoming homeless during this time. We definitely don't want to see anyone become homeless as a result of no fault of their own in this, uh, COVID-19. So, please access our city's website, make sure that you utilize the tools that are available, and if you're not able to access the website, then please do call our city, and our staff will direct you in the right direction. So, uh, we ask for your patience, we thank you for your support, and we, um, are here to serve you, so please, uh, stay in touch with us. Thank you. And I, I do believe that we should move this and adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Reins. Councilmember Jen- uh, Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is John Jennings, uh, telephonically. You know, this, uh, proposed resolution invokes the concept of home. Um, really, nothing could be more important right now, that sense of security, that sense of place, that sense of belonging, and the inability for some to financially afford to continue in their home is very troubling. Uh, one thing that was buoyed by making this decision today is that the Orange County Superior Court, which all, all of our residents would be subject to, has extended the time period for unlawful detainer actions, and continued those out for a period of time to accommodate the coronavirus, uh, COVID-19 issues as well. Uh, so I think that what we're really doing here is we're taking a stand as a city to say that this is the right move, that we support the governor, that we support our residents, uh, in staying in their homes, and we're tracking along what our other, uh, fellow, uh, sister agencies in the government are doing to ensure that our people are protected. Uh, I, I think that now's the time to do that. Uh, I, I, by way of note, I would encourage all the landlords out there to take heed that we are trying to not undermine your value as well, that we need, we have many landlords who are just private residences, that, uh, you know, they, they own one piece of property. So, uh, the, the concept of these being large landlords is not, is not always accurate. But for all landlords, I would encourage you to take note that we're not undermining the value of, of the contract that you're in. I would also encourage them to be very compassionate, uh, when enforcing that, and giving everybody the, the leeway. There's all sorts of legal mechanisms available to the entire community on both sides of this equation, uh, to come out with a new deal that would, that would provide for everyone, and I would certainly encourage them to do that, and really will be unto the person that takes this and uses it for its peril, because it's certainly not intended to do that. And I'm sure that the courts would have to, many questions about that in any event. So, with that, I encourage the support of this. I appreciate the governor, uh, taking the first step on this, and, uh, I think it's the right thing for looking at it to go. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Member, thank you, Councilmember Jennings. We'll move over to Mayor Protem Miniger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, like my colleagues, I wholeheartedly support and advocate this resolution pertaining to this temporary statewide, um, moratorium on eviction of rental, um, uh, units specifically for our city Laguna Nigal. We've been receiving quite a few, uh, emails, along with all my colleagues. We are aware of what residents, uh, are saying, so I'm in support of that, and I make a motion to move.
Thank you very much. Um, you know, I have to just, um, piggyback on everyone that what they're talking about, you know, having the security and the peace of mind knowing that you do have a, a home to go to, especially during times like this. A lot of us are unemployed. Um, I think that's the best thing to do. I did wanna reach out, because I do believe that those that are landlords, and, and that's how they actually get income as well, that they can go through their banks right now, and the banks are allowing them to actually, um, push the mortgage back, um, to the end of their payments. Is this correct?
Correct.
So, so that way, it is, you know, it, it's going both ways. It's not just one-sided. So, I thank goodness there's a balance there. So, again, those of you that do have property rentals, if you're not aware of that, if you go onto the, um, website where your mortgage is, there's usually something there, and you can go ahead and actually just request it, and it's pretty quick to do that. So, that's great to hear. Well, I have a motion, and, um, I'll go ahead and take, do I have a second?
Um, Councilmember, I think Councilmember-
Oh, second.
Okay, so I have a, a motion by Mayor Protem, and I have a second by, uh, Councilmember Jennings. All in favor, we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Jenaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Reins?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Minigar?
Aye.
And Mayor Davies?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous.
Motion moves. Thank you very much. All right, this concludes our discussion items, so we will now move on to council reports and, uh, city manager report. So, let's start with, uh, Councilmember Jenaway, please.
Thank you, Mayor Davies. Um, two things I'd like to report on. One is, I'm the Chair of the Orange County Senior Citizens Advisory Council, and I would like to make sure all of our community knows, in addition to the seniors, that all the residents know that the most important thing for seniors right now is to stay safe, and to stay safe, they need to be staying at home. But with that comes the issue of isolation. Isolation, not being in contact with those that you, that care about you, also needing groceries, needing medication, and, um, so what we need to do as a community, and I'm asking everybody in our community to reach out to your neighbors, and let them know that you are there, you are there to assist them, and of those of you who cannot go out, because maybe you are a senior yourself or have underlying health conditions, phone calls are marvelous just to stay connected. But the governor's, um, campaign is stay home, save lives, and check in. So, we have put on, on our city's social media, and it's been distributed, distributed many places, a, um, basically a postcard that you can print up and drop off at your neighbors and let them know. But this is something that the entire community should be involved with, so that everybody knows that they are not alone, even though we are all staying at home. In addition to the city's website, uh, the county, the Office on Aging has a helpline. Any senior citizen that needs any type of assistance can call the helpline. And, uh, they have really staffed it up well. They have been receiving many, many calls, but a lot of county staff from other offices are, um, being deployed to assist with that, and also to assist with the delivering of the home-delivered meals. The info line is 800-510-2020, and they will direct your call and get you the information that you need. So, any senior in our community, please first look on the city website, and then you have this county, uh, Office on Aging helpline to call. The second area that I wanna, um, draw our residents' attention to is I'm also Chair of the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, and you know, we think, okay, the brick and mortar libraries are closed right now, but our library system has so many online resources, that while students and adults are at home, they can be accessing the online resources. There is many classes, there's ebooks, so I encourage everyone to go to ocpL.org and do some exploring. Um, and all of this is free, but you can do classes, you can get certificates, you can download books, and even if you don't have a library card yet, you can get an e-card. So, um, please take a look at that and explore it, and this is something that, um, you'll be enriched by, and it, you know, may provide you with some information, some classes that you always thought you wanted to take and didn't have time to. So, but please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, and stay safe, and stay at home, and stay healthy. Thank you, Mayor Davies.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenaway. We'll move with Councilmember Reins, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor Davies. Uh, I just wanted to once again say, we're, we're safe at home, so let's be creative as, uh, residents and, and, and do the best that we can. It, it's a difficult time for all of us. Um, we can practice kindness, we can reconnect with our families now. So many times, we are in a situation where we just wish we had that extra time to spend with our family, and now is that time. I know that for many parents right now, myself included, we're, we're home with our children, and we're teaching them, and we're realizing how valuable our teachers are, and what they do for our children, and how we've been thrown into this place. We were, we're, uh, executing things and, um, learning new math skills that we didn't have before, at least I am. And so, I just wanna encourage all parents to take this time and to realize that learning comes in so many different ways, and if we don't figure out the problem, or if we don't get every answer correct, it's okay, because there's so many other things we can teach our children while they're home with us right now. So, take time to be home, safe with them, love them, and, um, teach them some of the things that you have the opportunity to teach them right now. I know with, uh, Easter being this week, many of our faithful, uh, residents who are either celebrating Easter and also Passover this upcoming week, I just want to say that this is a time we can really reflect on our faith and, and be, uh, alone with our, our, our God, and, and just know that we are protected and we are safe at home in His shelter. So, I, I wanna reach out and say that I lift up all of our police and fire nurses, and all those who are working so hard, um, our grocery workers, truck drivers across the country that are delivering us everything that we need, and if we can do our part by staying home and being safe and helping save lives, then we will be a better, stronger Laguna Nigal when we reemerge out of all of this. So, thank you all for being so kind and patient and giving each other grace. I appreciate all of you and, and all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reins. Councilmember Jennings?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just wanna say thank you to both my colleagues for those are really touching words, and I appreciate them. Uh, so thank you very much for that. Um, one, one issue sort of off-topic is, I wanted to let my council colleagues know some good news from the Orange County Housing Finance Trust. Um, we did a NOFA, which is, uh, something called a Notice of Funding Availability earlier this year, for eleven and a half million dollars in available funds, just in the first six months of that entity's, uh, operation. Uh, I'm pleased to report that at the end of that NOFA period, we received applications from many, many applicants, uh, which greatly exceed the 11.5 million dollars, so there is a great need for that. Uh, our, our, uh, lobbyists in Sacramento are telling us that there's a very high likelihood of, of favorable, uh, response to legislation to try to get up to 35 million dollars more into the trust. Uh, so that is going very well. Some of the applicant cities, the, the applicants in cities that, uh, were not members of the trust, and just moments before the deadline, I think we added two new cities to that. So, uh, we're up to, if my number is correct, 24 or 25 cities in the trust out of 34 in Orange County, so that's a very good thing. Uh, moving on to, uh, the coronavirus, uh, COVID-19 issue, you, you know, I've been just dumbstruck over the last several weeks. I had the chance to give a speech last year that meant a lot to me, but the, the, the theme of that speech was that we were, uh, we are not alone, and we're all in this together. And I had no idea at the time how prophetic those words would come, uh, back to visit me and my family, and, uh, truly just been reminded of what a sense of community means, and how unbelievably fortunate we are to have the infrastructure that Councilwoman Reins was, were talking about and relying on. As, as we look to our neighbors, and look to our friends, and look to our fellow businesses, we truly are not alone. We truly are all in this together, and never in the history of my lifetime has that been more acute. Um, I wanna say a special thank you to our medical community, uh, for those, especially people who are suffering from, uh, medical conditions that have nothing to do with coronavirus, but are having to go through a tremendous amount of effort just to get the care that they need for things that are very serious and often fatal, and, and if not treated, uh, but they're having to go through these special circumstances, many of which are having to go through them alone, because they're not able to take somebody to the hospital with them or to the doctor's appointment. So, I wanna let them know we're thinking about them. To the 21 residents of Laguna Nigal who have been diagnosed with coronavirus, you have our, uh, love and support. We'd like to try to find a way to help in any way that we can. I invite contact from those people, uh, if they, if they need it, uh, 'cause I'm sure we as a city would like to try to respond in a meaningful way. And then, as I was coming home tonight, I heard, uh, one siren going in one direction, and another type of siren going in another direction, and was just sort of heartfelt reminded that we have our police services and our firefighters who are, uh, they're at full capacity, they're going strong, and they are risking themselves, and, and all that they are, and including their families when they go home at night, uh, for our well-being. And I just wanted to say thank you to them. Uh, we truly are one city, and we are tomorrow, and we are together, and I appreciate that. And Madam Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Mayor Protem Miniger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I've been getting used to attending my regional and sub-regional meetings via, uh, WebExing. Uh, nothing to report on those. The only message I have, not to repeat what my colleague said, which was very well said, just stay safe and healthy by staying at home in these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just wanna kinda give you an update of what I've been doing for the last couple of weeks. Um, as your mayor, my responsibility continues to be the- to be the safety of this community, even while I'm staying at home. The City Manager and I are having daily calls regarding the emails that are coming in from our citizens. I want to personally thank our City Manager and Deputy City Manager and staff for responding to each email. All essential services will continue to remain up and running. I have been having daily and weekly updates with our county supervisors and the mayors of Orange County. It's been very helpful sharing with the other mayors as to how they are dealing with the ramifications of the coronavirus. We're on the same page when it comes to requesting more testing for our county's health department. I've also requested that city staff should be considered essential workers and have access to testing. Tomorrow, we'll be taking part in a White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs briefing called on for recent passed CARE Act. As a mayor, I am concerned that the cities will not be directly receiving funds and that it will be going through the county, giving them discretion as to what each city is entitled to. It's imperative that there is a direct path of funding that goes separately to our local county and state agencies. Laguna Nigal has always been a business-friendly community. Knowing the huge hit our small businesses are taking due to the coronavirus, our city community development department are focusing on working one-on-one with our local businesses to see what their needs are at this time and working with them to get those needs met. Our city is dedicated to continuing our concierge level of service to all the local businesses during this crisis. Right now, our country is in the eye of the storm, better known as coronavirus. How we handle ourselves in the next couple of weeks will be determined if we stay in the eye or if we start to see the light. Now, if ever, is when we need to hunker down, stay home. If possible, stay away from making small runs to the grocery store. Ask yourself, do I really need this item or can I go without it for now? I really, excuse me. Continuing to focus on helping those that are in need, calling on elder neighbors, seeing if they need anything picked up. Laguna Nigal is a very blessed community with the most caring people I've ever met. It's what makes it the best place to live. A special thank you to our healthcare providers, our first responders, our local restaurants and stores that are providing essential services. Whether you celebrate Passover or Easter, I wish you a very blessed week. Make the most of the time you have with your loved ones and let them know how important they are. Thank you. I'm going to move on over to our Deputy City Manager, Martin.
No, it's actually my report. Oh, I've got to go. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I have an update recapping the city's actions and initiatives in response to COVID-19 to date, and I want to share what we've done and what we are doing going forward. Beginning on March twelfth, we postponed or canceled all city events and gatherings. We also closed the Sea Country Senior Community Center and continued our senior meal program. I declared a local emergency on March sixteenth and knew the City Council ratified that decision unanimously on March seventeenth. I opened the Emergency Operations Center on March sixteenth and temporarily closed all city facilities, parks, the pool, and the skate park to the public at that time. Since then, all the playgrounds, sports facilities, and the pooch park have also been closed to comply with the Governor's stay-at-home order. Although we had to close city facilities to the public, the city's essential government services are still being provided online, via mail, and over the phone. Our essential services include our fully-staffed public safety teams from the Sheriff's Department and the Orange County Fire Authority. Further, our additional essential services includes operating the senior meals program, issuing permits for emergency work, conducting inspections for emergency projects, maintaining streets, traffic lights, and landscaping, preparing necessary financial reports, and providing the public with important public information on the latest developments regarding the pandemic. Regarding our workforce, just as the health of our, and the safety of our community is our number one priority, the health and safety of our city's staff is also our number one priority. Since day one, we put the proper safety measures into place to protect all staff while we do the important work of this community. On any given workday, approximately thirty percent of our workforce is here, working out of City Hall and Sea Country Senior Center. Sixty percent of our workforce is working remotely, and ten percent of our workforce is in self-isolation because, because they fall into an age category where that is recommended or they have underlying health conditions. We have been holding regular conference calls with staff to keep them informed and answer their questions. The department heads and I have been operating our EOC and running our city operations. Everyone's done a great job and has shown resilience in the face of difficult circumstances. I would like to take this moment to publicly thank all of our city staff from the bottom of my heart, especially our essential service workers and our department heads and our partners with the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Authority for putting the community first and working so hard to protect everyone and keep our operations going. I want to talk for a minute about the fiscal impacts. The fiscal impacts of COVID-19 on our residents, businesses, and our city government is severe. We're working hard to provide residents and businesses with the resources to the federal and state programs available. Part of the economic challenges are a result of the closure of many of our businesses in the community. And in order to assist the businesses, I've created an Economic Recovery Team. The team consists of several community development staff members, with the team being led by Community Development Director Jonathan Ordunia. The purpose of the team is to assist businesses in our community. Specifically, they're going to focus on proactively contacting each and every business in Laguna Nigal to help walk them through the various resources available and be the point of contact to help navigate them through this challenging time. Our goal is to be the resource and, and the point of contact to help streamline this process for them and provide them comfort in knowing that we are there. We're also working with the Chamber of Commerce on various programs to help businesses get the resources they need. For our government, the COVID-19 pandemic has cost the city approximately four hundred thousand dollars in lost revenue and increased expenditures just in three and a half weeks. This number grows daily, and one of the most significant revenue losses for us is the loss in sales tax and property tax. Further, the public employee retirement system announced in the first week that they locked sixty-five billion dollars in investments the first week of the crisis. There will be a fiscal impact to all purse agencies as a result of this loss, but we don't yet know what that is. As soon as the economic realities of this situation began, I authorized spending only for essential services. We stopped all capital projects that did not need to move forward, with the exception of a few. Overall, there are sixteen capital projects that are on hold, seventeen that will continue for safety and needed maintenance, or the project was in the process of being completed and too far along to stop. And we are looking at possibly recommending only four CIP projects in the next fiscal year. The community center will be completed when work is allowed to resume again. For both public health and fiscal reasons, we have canceled all community events, including the July Fourth festivities, the carnival, and the summer concerts. I am in regular communication with the White House, the Governor's Office, and the county, working through the impacts of COVID-19 on the community. This will continue until this crisis is behind us. These are extremely difficult times, and we will get through them together because we are strong and we are a resilient community with amazing staff. There will be times again when we can socialize with one another, enjoy each other's company, and celebrate as a community. However, right now, we need to work together to take care of each other, to keep everyone safe, to stay home, to stay healthy, until the time comes that we can be together again and celebrate as a city family. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Staff? Thank you very much. I think that's going to finish up our meeting tonight, and I want you to make sure that you're, you stay at home so we can flatten the curve and be healthy. With that, we're going to adjourn at seven fifty-eight.